Public comments that drop in. Any questions or thoughts? Okay, awesome. Let's hang around.
I have a question, I guess. It's not a public comment if it is my question about a letter that we got. Is that appropriate for this time?
Is it in relation to the budget?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
So, the question I think was Andrew Gallagher's about whether the budget has any room in it or any provision for after-school care with the change in schedule. And I don't remember that we covered that or discussed it, so I just thought I'd ask that question.
I don't know if Joe wants to speak to that in particular, but we have not talked specifically about after-school care. We did put out information that we're going to continue with the late start Wednesdays rather than shuffling it to early release Wednesdays. A lot of that had to do with the daycare on those particular days. But outside of that, there has not been more discussion around that that I've been a part of. But there might have been another group, so Joe might have more information.
Yeah, we have not set aside any other additional dollars to budget for that. We do, we'll have a bit of a shift because we do have people covering the playground in the morning. And so we'll, we'll probably shift that coverage to the afternoon for that same half-hour time period to make it a little bit easier at that point. But we think that will actually be fewer people using before care because of the earlier start time. You know, when you get a later start time, people need it before care, which is sometimes harder because it's a shorter distance. But we did not add dollars to this budget to cover people's childcare.
So where are we logistically? Is that still a possibility that we'll be able to do what we said we'd like to do and help families with a mechanism for them to get after-school care?
I think we'll be able to find, you know, we're already engaged with partners. Part of the work we've been doing with Project Oasis is to talk with folks to see what opportunities there are for them to provide. And then we know CPRD has been interested in doing that. We've had one of our local churches running one as well, free of charge. So we have several partners that will be engaging and looking at how to do that kind of work.
Okay, Andrew's letter also pointed out that September is not that far away. It seems like it's a pass go away.
It's really not.
And so that is, well, I need ongoing attention past the end of this month to make sure that it happens. That's, I think that's what Andrew would like us to have heard from his letter. And I think I've done my part to get that heard.
And really quick, Joe, if our partnerships are not enough to cover the care, we can still allocate funds to this, right?
We could if the board decided that they wanted to provide other people's childcare. So that would be, and then we'd have to talk about logistics of what that looks like in terms of who gets paid for, you know, what that looks like from a, you know, sliding income scale or whatever that might be.
Right.
But part of that's also about facility. So that's something we could do in the future if we wanted to talk about it. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just a suggestion, since we are kind of new to doing this virtually, for any of the attendees that are on the meeting, if you'd like, you can use the Q and A function to, if you have something you'd like to add or talk about with the budget hearing, and we can promote you up to a panel so that you can actually speak if you have something to say. Because I don't know if anybody who's attending had actually planned to make comments, and there's not a way for me to get ahold of them right now.
Hey, Jennifer.
Yes, Dave.
Are we just waiting till seven o'clock then?
I believe we do need to keep the hearing open. So if anybody does appear in the attendees and they wish to ask a question or make a comment on the budget, that they can do so if they jump onto the meeting.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just a reminder to any attendees who have joined the group, if you would like to make a comment or propose something to ask about the current budget, we are in a budget hearing right now. And you can place something into the Q and A section of the Zoom webinar, and we can promote you up if you have a comment that you'd like to make. Hey, Ron. In preparation for the board meeting, will you be the official timekeeper for public comments again? Thank you.
You'd think I'd be able to think of that on my own, but apparently I can't yet. Maybe someday.
Okay, it's a team effort. Rebecca already said she would do the pledge of allegiance for us, so I think we're covered now. All right, everyone, just a five-minute warning. We're at 6:55, so we'll start our normally scheduled board meeting in five minutes. All right, as we enter the last couple of minutes, if I could get everyone listening to come back to their screens. I would like to thank on behalf of the board, the entire budget committee, for the work that you've done, the time you've committed, and the diligence that you've shown in reviewing these. It's quite extensive, large document. As always, we appreciate your time and your passion and your commitment. And hopefully, we will see all of you next budget season next year. Any other thoughts or comments for the committee? Okay, thank you all for your service. If you would like to stay on officially for another minute and a half, that would be fine. Otherwise, we'll start the board meeting here in just a minute. Yep, it's seven o'clock. I was waiting for Ron's English timekeeper to tell us, but it looks like he's still on mute, so go off on my clock.
She did say it two seconds before you did.
Perfect, all right. I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. Joe, would you mind doing the translation announcement for us?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, first up on our agenda is our flag salute. And our trustee director Pyros has again volunteered to lead us. Whenever you're ready, Rebecca.
Okay, here goes. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. All right, so on tonight's agenda, first, thank everybody for coming. Thank you for coming. I know it's the end of the school year, and we all start to kind of lose some steam, but there's still lots of important stuff happening tonight's agenda. So first off, we'll start with public comments. I believe we have five requests for public comment this evening. Then we'll move into our board comments and then superintendent comments. We'll review our consent agenda. And then we've got a couple of reports and presentations, one on climate and culture from Greg, and the other, the school-based health center from Luke. We'll take a break around 8:25, and then revisit some old business, our Newburgh Police Department proclamation, second read. We'll go into new business, adopting the budget, discussing our proposed board meeting calendar for the coming year, plans for our board retreat. It's traditional that the board gets together over the summer for some group learning. And then we've got a resolution to approve for the bond capital funds project. Okay, with that, let's move into public comment. "The Newburgh School Board invites and encourages citizen attendance and involvement. The Board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, raise questions, concerns, or compliments. Thank you to everyone who has submitted a request to speak and to those who sent in comments. In order to conduct a timely meeting, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and requests to speak during the meeting are not accepted. When called, please state your name, your relationship to the district, place of residence, and the subject that you'll be addressing. The Board may choose not to address your request if your topic is outside of the scope of Board governance. And we ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We also remind you that due to the judiciary nature of the Board's role in resolving personnel issues, we cannot hear complaints specific to staff or incidents involving current issues under review in the Board complaint process. If comments pertain to Board actions or specific Board members, I ask that you refrain from personal or character attacks. Thank you for taking the time to be here today. As a Board, the comments we hear help guide us in our decisions and help educate us as leaders in the community." Okay, and I see we've got Ty on, so how about we start with Ty? And then we'll go and invite Brittany. Oh, nope, Ty's gone. Nope, there she is. Good, okay. So we'll start with Ty, and then next up, Brittany. Go ahead. Oh, and then also for everybody, please watch Director Mock. He will have your time cards so that you can tell how much time you have left. All right, thanks, Ty. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me this time. After attending the last board meeting and being asked at what I heard, I really had no choice but to make I really had no choice but to make a comment because, as Dr. King said, in the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. Tonight, I'm here to speak as a member of this community and as a friend to Director Inez Pena. When Director Pena spoke of her conflicted feelings, both the joy of being elected and the sadness she felt at the racism she personally experienced, and that she witnessed directed at me during the campaign, she did so eloquently and courageously. It takes a strong and brave person to not only endure racism, but to pull it out in all of its forms. And Director Pena did just that. Unfortunately, instead of being acknowledged for her bravery, Director Shannon took Director Pena's moment and attempted to admonish her for sharing her truth, questioning and discounting both her and my experiences with racism in this community during our campaigns. Let me be clear. Racist acts took place in Newburgh during the school board campaigns. To take a black candidate's campaign sign and place a large tree branch on top of it multiple times is an act rooted in racism and Jim Crow imagery that has terrorized black people in this country for generations. And the image of my face under that tree branch was not lost on me. I understood very clearly the racist message the perpetrators were sending me when they continued to place that branch on top of my sign day after day. So considering that fact alone, Director Shannon's words and conduct towards Director Pena were not only ignorant, they were cruel. Director Shannon, at the very least, owes Director Pena an apology, but he also owes me and the entire community one. Our leaders have a duty to be knowledgeable of the history and impact of racism, and can no longer rest on their privilege and simply say, there's no racism here, because they don't have to endure it. So I will direct Director Shannon, as he directed Director Pena, do better. Next, I would like to address the proposed Newburgh Dundee Police Department proclamation. While I personally believe the Newburgh Dundee Police Department serves our community well, an official proclamation celebrating their service should not come from the school board, as it has nothing to do with students or the areas that are within the purview of the board, policy, budget, and supervision of the superintendent. Additionally, considering the issues that our country is facing around policing, specifically around police violence against communities of color, and especially the killing of unarmed black people at the hands of police in cities across America, if the school board adopts this proclamation, it will send a terrible message to our students of color who may experience the Newburgh Dundee Police Department much differently than Director Brown does. I urge the board to vote no on this proclamation, but in the alternative, I urge you to, at minimum, do your due diligence and at least speak to students of color about their experience with the Newburgh Dundee Police Department, their re-school resource officers, and the proposed proclamation before you move forward. As a district, we have committed to having an equity focus, and approach at a proclamation like this will certainly undermine. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ty. Okay, next we have Brittany, and after Brittany, we will have Abby.
One moment, I will get those all moved around here.
Thank you, Jen.
She's shown up from the screen.
It looks like Abby just said she's not able to unmute to speak. She'll email in her thoughts. Okay. Great, Abby, they will be included in the... Well, let's see, if she gets them to us this evening, can they be included in the board packet, Jen?
I have them already. Oh, wait. No, I'm sorry, no, for Abby? No.
Yes.
I don't have that. Um...
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, Brittany, we can hear you.
Sorry, for some reason, it wasn't letting me in as a panelist, so I can speak.
That's okay, that's okay. Abby, if you can get your comments to Jen this evening, we can go ahead and include them in the packet. Okay, Brittany, hi, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Hi, thank you for having me. First of all, I just wanted to let you know I'm not in your district, but I am. My name is Brittany Ruiz, and I am specifically calling on my capacity as a parental rights advocate for Yamhill County. And my topic of discussion is a school-based health clinic. Two years ago, I attended a school board meeting in McMinnville where they brought up a school-based health clinic, and it was presented without proper public meeting notification, meaning per public meeting laws, you need to let interested persons know, actually let interested persons know. And parents, as you know, right, or they sign up and they are a part of, and they also elect the school board members, the school district, and they should be actually notified when there is a decision such as a school-based health clinic, mainly and most importantly because of the fact that current state statutes actually in place right now would actually make decisions about a child without parent notification. And that includes the way school-based health, the school-based health clinics are set up and designed. So I am actually just doing a plea for you guys to make sure, if you're gonna bring up this topic, please do all the due diligence necessary to let families know in the county, because I only heard about it through a friend who's very, very active in the Newburgh School District, who said, hey, I'm concerned about this, can you give me more input? So I learned about it, and I'm in McMinnville, but I had friends who are actually actively in the Newburgh School District that had no idea about the school-based health clinic. So I just wanted to put a plug in there, and hopefully you guys can table this discussion until actual notification has been issued to parents, but I remain fully concerned that the decision to even take this up has been done without all parents being notified. And if you have any other questions, I can also submit my concerns about why I'm concerned about this being brought up without parent notification. I can also submit that as an email and also cite all the statutes that I'm concerned about. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany. Also, just for everybody to be clear, the meeting was properly noticed to the public, as is all public board meetings.
So parents were sent a notification from the school district?
Brittany, I can follow up with you in email. I just wanted to make it clear that this meeting was following all public meeting notifications.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that the ORS that I'm referring to, because you followed up on that, there's a specific ORS statute which says, in a case that involves parents, in this particular case, and I ran this by an attorney, and also ran this by Secretary State's Office and the Department of Justice, the ORS that states very clearly that if you're gonna take up a topic that involves parents' rights, which is what this school-based health clinic does, you have to give actual notification to the parents. So I just want to be clear, like in McMinnville, they didn't do that. They didn't send any notice to the parents at all. It wasn't until there was outrage from the community that they issued a statement, and they issued an opt-out letter to the parents. I just want to make sure that there's an actual notification sent to parents, and that's all. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Next up, so Abby, I just want to, is Abby still on the call? I want to make sure that she's...
I do see her still as an attendee. Would you like me to try and bring her up?
Yeah, if you could try, I'm not sure. Yes, I just can't talk. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so she's not available for comment. Thank you, Abby.
Sorry. All right, I will go back down. Okay.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that, Jen.
That's okay.
Okay, next up, we have Guadalupe, and after Guadalupe, we will hear from Kelly. Hi, Guadalupe, welcome.
Thank you.
Remember, Director Mock is gonna have your time signals for you, so start whenever you're ready.
Thanks so much. Chair Penner, members of the board, for the record, my name is Guadalupe Martinez. I'm a community member and live on South River Street in Newburgh. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm here to address the comments made to one of the previous meetings by Director Shannon. My son began playing football when he was about eight years old. His second or third year in the CPRD youth league, the volunteer coaches held a draft-type process to get the kids onto their respective teams. That sounds kind of fun, I thought, and undoubtedly it was for all of the seventy-something other kids. It wasn't so much for my son and one other boy. Both remained on the field, where everyone was supposed to stand waiting for their name to be called. Every one of the other seventy-plus kids were called onto a team. My son and the other boys stood on the field until I ran on to, out to one of the coordinators and asked what had happened. They were assigned to a team as an afterthought. None of the coaches looked twice, no one was bothered. I distinctly recall the trauma I felt watching my son standing there, like I had on many occasions when I was in middle school, after not being picked by any of the kids to be on a team. I learned the drill. No one wanted the Mexican kid. The day my son was left on the field without being picked, I had to talk myself out of what I already knew was true. Things hadn't changed in mu- hadn't changed much in thirty years since I'd been in school. The difference was that, in my son's case, it was adults who left a nine-year-old boy standing, grasping at nothing. Were the men who orchestrated the draft evil men? Likely not. Did they intentionally leave my son on the field to hurt him? Probably not. What I do believe happened is that those men tainted by their own immediate preferences and experiences, and hoping to make their own boys happy, they had little time to think about my own kid. Mr. Shannon, Mr. Brown, would you agree that what happened to my son was likely unintentional? I'd, I'd, I'll add that he was an outstanding football player even through high school. I could say a lot more about that, but I'll, in the interest of time, I won't. My son did not get missed on that early draft because he lacked talent or because the coaches were evil, hood-wearing, racist. My son was missed because we are all driven through the lens of our learned experience. This is called implicit bias, and we all have different types of it, of unconscious bias. In the last two weeks, I learned of a matter involving a young Latina basketball player who was intentionally excluded from playing during games. She knows why. Neither her or her parents have made the cause a secret. Dig into the issue to abate your doubt about the cause of her mistreatment. Mr. Shannon, your experience unfortunately does not include or even empathize with the perspectives of a child of color. It perhaps includes the perspectives of a child living on the margins, or a child living in poverty or with trauma, and it does not consider the experiences of a child of color and the coarse and brazen disregard which this society has built to benefit families perhaps like yours unleashes on kids like my son. You, sir, and I say this with all intention, need to refrain from telling a woman of color how she is being offensive because she is indicting a system filled with inequities that you insist on perpetuating. If you cannot find a way to represent every child, the children often with the greatest needs in our community, then refrain from standing in the way of the people who in fact do understand and have been working to make circumstances for those kids more inclusive and fair. I'm specifically addressing Director Shannon and Brown here because it has become evident they are quite comfortable making public, public attempts at silencing the needs of students of color, and even overtly other members of the board. Why are you so afraid and against equity? It takes a tremendous amount of humility to acknowledge your error and privilege. I do hope that you find even a small little piece of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Guadalupe. Okay, finally, this evening, we have Kelly.
To the work.
Yes, hi, Kelly. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Hey, my name is Kelly Betcher. I am the parent of three children, all who are in or will be going through the dual-language program at Newburgh. First and foremost, I really am here because I wanted to thank Director Mock and Director Whitberg for their service to the Newburgh School District. I was the child of a school board member, so I grew up knowing it was a thing to stop. And I just wanted you both to know that you're recognized and you're appreciated, and that hasn't gone unnoticed. So again, thank you for your endless contributions to the community. I know, including but not limited to countless hours creating solid-based and equitable policies serving on numerous educational committees, working on budgeting our district finances after some really tough years, the hiring of our current superintendent, your ongoing leadership and your ability to model professionalism while working with some high-profile board members and in situations this past year, and I'm sure in others. And I want you to both know you're gonna be thoroughly missed, and I really think the community is going to feel the loss of your absence in the coming years. So thank you both for your time. And also on that note, I just wanted to remind our current, our future, and your newer board members, I would ask that you maintain a level of professionalism, abstain from angry or inappropriate outbursts, and speak respectfully to each other always. You are a model for our children. You are the face of our school district, and you represent the staff, the students, and the community, and I think that should weigh heavy on their shoulders. And lastly, I just wanted to note that I am not in favor of the proclamation for the Newburgh Police Department chief or the force as a whole. I personally am super thankful for all that they've done and do for our community. But as a parent, I don't see how this serves the education of our children or the school board, or what the purpose of this really would be, and honestly, it feels a little bit like a sneaky candidate endorsement. And at the very least, it's ill-timed and inappropriate right now. And I'd just like to remind the board of the role in which they serve, and ask that their time remain focused on educational policies and the needs of our children. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. I hope my kids eventually go to board meetings as adults and say how awesome it was that their mom was on the school board. We'll see. I'm not holding out no hope, but thank you for coming. Thank you to everybody who spent time to come and share your comments with us this evening. Okay, now we will move into board comments, and I just wanted to take a second here to remind board members of our operating agreement. Operating principles define the beliefs, values, and methods of working together. Successful organizations are the result of effective and dynamic leadership. In order to promote such leadership, we must agree on fundamental ways of working together as a board and as a district. The board serves as a model for the entire district. We all work collectively to benefit students in the district and agree to keep children at the focus of our work and our decisions. If comments by board members pertain to specific board members, I again ask that you refrain from personal or character attacks. All right, would anybody like to start us off this evening? Okay, it's gonna be roll call. Bob, do you have any comments this evening? No? Okay. Brian, do you have comments this evening?
Sure, I'll say some things. First, I just want to say that I think what we witnessed tonight was the chatterings of the ideologically possessed people who have, have adopted a narrative and see the world through the eyes of that narrative, no matter what the contrary evidence is. And I'll speak specifically to Ms. Harden's comments about law enforcement. This narrative that's being pushed in our country that, you know, unarmed black men are being hunted by police on a daily basis, this is simply a lie. If you go look at the statistics and you examine the numbers and you adjust the number of unarmed black men compared to the number of unarmed white men in this country, and you adjust it by rates of criminality or rates at which those populations call 911, there is no disparity. This has been studied by Harvard professors. This has been looked at greatly. This is a lie. It is the big lie, and I will not allow the hard-working men and women who put their lives on the line to protect their communities to be slandered by liars. That's what I'll say. Thank you.
Rebecca, sorry, I was gonna say Director Pyros, but then I almost said Director Rebecca Pyros. Rebecca, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I wanted to acknowledge the people who, who, who shared their truths tonight. And I, I want us to be an empathetic, understanding board. I, I um, want us to be an empathetic, understanding board to listen to the hearts of the, the, the public who shares their truths. Truths I might not have experienced, but they're, they're, they're truths. And um, uh, this, we're, we're not speaking ideology here, we're speaking about people's experiences. And um, uh, we need to, to find a um, a better way of sharing. And um, with that, I, I, on a lighter note, I'm looking forward to experiencing graduation this weekend. That it's been a year of sacrifice, of struggle, and, and this is the best part of being a school board member is attending graduation to celebrate with the students their success and all the work that they've gone through. And um, I, it, it, it's like you said in the, in the part, it's about the kids. We need to keep the kids in the forefront. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Brown, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, uh, Brandy, I would just like to say to the mom, um, you know, it's been a coach for so long, it's, uh, sports can be amazing and they can be brutal. What happened that night uh, should never happen. Um, I'm still coaching to this day, last night, uh, uh, had a blast with, with kids that were um, Latino. And it's like, that's why I've coached my whole career, so I would have never done what those coaches did. I can't speak for how that, that night proceeded, but um, you know, as far as just Newburgh sports in general, whether it's football, soccer, I coached tennis and basketball. Um, I'm sorry that happened to your son. Um, I enjoy every single kid I coach, and uh, I know most coaches feel that way. So, but again, you know, we still have to live through those, those, those tough times. Uh, so, I'm trying not to use names here, and I would just say two on, on a call earlier. Um, you know, if, if you'd like to get together with uh, myself and Brandy, I could shed the light what really happened uh, on, on that, it's not the time or the place to do that right now, but uh, Director Penner, I would more than be uh, happy to sit down with you and, and what was said was just simply not true. And I would uh, I know firsthand, so I'll uh, leave it at that, but if, if you wanna set up a meeting, I would, I would do that and share that with them because uh, I think more than anything, like Rebecca said just a second ago, it's all about the kids. It's all about the kids, it's all about the kids, and uh, we're getting to that great time of graduation. Rebecca, I'm looking forward to it too. It's a super great night, and I know the high school's working really hard on it, talked to those guys today. And uh, you know, as we go through this tough time this year, the, the, the road's still gonna be bumpy and, and uh, let's keep focusing on the kids and, and uh, make it a, a great experience. I think that's what the, the district office is trying to do. Uh, I think sometimes on the board level, we uh, we probably need to have more discussions, and I think sometimes when uh, you know, people seem to not want there to be any uh, maybe tough discussions, but almost anything that's worth its while. Um, take the bond, for example. This is gonna be a tough go, this is a lot of money, a lot of great things are gonna happen, but it's not gonna be easy. You know, I think everybody in the district's gonna have to really roll up their sleeves on this one, so there'll be tough conversations even around on that stuff, so. Um, again, thanks for all the people that called in, and uh, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Dave, yeah, let's connect after the meeting, schedule a time. Uh, let's see, who hasn't gone yet? Uh, Director Penya, do you have any comments this evening?
I do, thank you. I just wanna thank uh, all of the people who came in, spoke at public comment, thank you. Um, I think it makes your public, your public comment makes us better as a board because we're hearing from our constituents. Um, one thing that I've said before, and I'll say it again, and something that my mentor um, shared with me is, things are the way they are because everyone is doing exactly what it is that they're doing, and what is my part in that? My part is that I'm gonna try hard to not co-create a toxic work environment for this board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Director Mock, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, a little, uh, first of all, I wanna thank Kelly Betcher for her comments. Uh, it was, it's nice to hear from somebody who's seen it from a family point of view, uh, appreciation like that, and I appreciate those comments, thank you very much. My next comment is an apology. Uh, I hold myself out as a advocate of civility, and I direct a civility project to George Fox. I was not civil last week, uh, at a couple, uh, for a little while there to Mr. Shannon. Uh, and uh, that was below my standard. Um, Mr. Shannon's comment was that he felt there was, or his implication was that there was some nefarious plan to sneak policies through by bringing them all at once, uh, late in the term. That's not the case, and I reacted to the insult and uh, could not have. I will point out that Mr. Shannon did just then turned around and surprised at the very last minute after the chair had called for the, said we were moving towards adjournment, that, that's when he ambushed uh, Inez with his comments last time. That's the kind of thing that we promised not to do, and which we haven't, uh, probably many of us been able to keep very well, which is not to surprise each other like that. Cause it left Inez without a chance to respond, and she had to wait two weeks to have any chance to respond. That's not the kind of thing we can do and still have a board that can learn to trust each other. I'll be off the board uh, you know, within a month. So uh, I'll be out of the picture. Uh, I wanna thank uh, Mr. Dehart, who will be succeeding me in my position, for his reference to his hope that he will be able to be a constructive member, building a team with ho- with trust with one another. And I'm looking forward to seeing him do that, and if he does that, I will be happy that he is on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got some comments to share this evening. Uh, the last two years of board service have been incredibly challenging for me as a leader. Uh, we have a very divisive board. As a team and as someone trying to lead that team, it's been difficult. I've been fair, realistic, honest, and transparent, the things that I want from an elected official, the things that I want from a leader. The chair position represents the board as a whole. The chair is only one of seven and has no more or less power than every person on this board. The chair shapes the agenda for the business meeting, works closely with the superintendent, and represents the school board at community functions and events. They represent the group that is comprised of every one of us, but to represent the group, there has to be a group. And there was mistrust right from the start. It was clear that there was ill-intent, there was no intention to learn or grow as leaders, and more importantly, as humans, by some members. As a group, we have had to lead the school district through a global pandemic. We have seen, I have seen, leadership at every single level of this organization show up every single day. And people are exhausted, and this group is no different. And then you throw a campaign into it. These are nonpartisan positions for a very good reason, and it's because of what we're seeing. It shouldn't be whoever has the most money gets elected to the school board, or whoever looks the most like the people in our community gets elected to the school board. It should be because they're the best leader, the best human to elect. Someone who will be professional, who will learn, who will grow, who will fail and succeed. Because failure means that you are learning and that you're trying. It is not leadership to choose time and time again to avoid learning from those failures purposely. When you see other humans on your team experiencing pain, expressing fear, and you choose not to comfort them, you don't listen to that experience to understand them, to be empathetic. Instead, you yell. You admonish them in a public meeting, you become emotionally hysterical, and for what? We have to treat each other as humans who have inherent dignity. Every single one of us wants to belong and to make a difference for the better. But wait, when I see actions, it makes me think, does everybody want to make a difference for the better? Or do some wish to enforce the status quo? The status quo that we know only serves some. COVID and distance learning has shown us that we live in a world with massive inequities, and even more painfully, that we live in a country with massive inequities. And then you start to look around at your community and you ask why? Why are children on IEPs not achieving to the standards that are set? Why are boys disciplined at higher rates than girls? Why are some students afraid, afraid to walk down the hallways at their schools? There's a lot of reasons that people feel safe or unsafe, and we owe it to all of our students, staff, our family, and our community to make sure that they're safe in our facilities. And we've been trying. Every person I work with in this school district, I see trying to make kids feel safe. And I see them trying to make themselves feel safe. And then they choose to spend two and a half hours on a Tuesday night, more for some, to see what's happening in their community. And they see board members, leaders, the people they elected behaving in a way that they don't even want their children to behave. We heard from a mother that she had to stop several times during the meeting to explain to her child, her student, her Newburgh student, that is not how you behave. That is not how you treat other humans, and it is certainly not leadership, several times. When I read that email, I knew exactly what that felt like because I've done the same thing for my children. Our children are paying attention, and as leaders, it is our responsibility, our elected duty, to serve them. It is not to serve some large outside organization, and it is certainly not to serve ourselves. The hate behavior that we all saw was not in service to students. So what do we do? As one board member, I come as my best leader, my best human, and I hope that others do the same. And when they don't, I learn and I grow. With the addition of two new board members, we can choose to come together to fulfill our responsibility to serve our students. We cannot do that if we are divided and unable to offer each other even the most basic of human dignity and respect. Okay, next we'll move into our superintendent comment.
Thank you, um, Director Penner. A couple of quick updates. Um, first of all, since we're speaking about board meetings, I did wanna let you know that we are uh, still working on putting together the system to be able to uh, do board meetings uh, in person and live streaming. That should be available uh, this summer, so we're still pulling a few uh, wires, getting some things connected. Um, but we'll at least be able to do um, some of those basic things, so as the new board comes together uh, and discusses uh, when they want to return in person and do those meetings, um, we should be available at least by the uh, end of summer, so we can move into that uh, that process for next year. So I wanted to give you a quick update, as I told you that we'd be able to do that. Uh, additionally, we do uh, wanna highlight, we have uh, a couple, uh, at least Rebecca spoke about graduation. It is uh, an incredible time for so many kids who uh, persevered through this amazing and strangely um, pandemic-themed school year. Um, it's probably the worst prom theme ever. Uh, so that's happening on Thursday night at five o'clock uh, for Catalyst. Uh, it's a drive-through, uh, lots of fun, I did it uh, last year. Uh, and then um, seven o'clock on Friday night for the students. Uh, they'll be coming together and having um, doing some talks and seeing all of you um, at the stadium, and then uh, Saturday, they will have a repeat of the drive-through celebration. We'll bring all their cars and um, get pictures and do all the fun things, so. It is, I think, maybe um, even more than uh, last year and prior years. Uh, this is a special year because of all the things that these students have uh, endured to make it. And I do also wanna highlight the incredibly Herculean um, efforts of staff to help these students get there because uh, this truly was um, a lot of work by a lot of people to make sure we got students across that finish line, so, well done. And then finally, um, I wanted to congratulate three uh, scholarship winners uh, because the district applied for a grant for the Alaskan Native and Native American Grant uh, through the ODE. Uh, these are ten thousand dollar uh, scholarships uh, for students who qualify. Um, and the three students who I got those are um, Bryden Knows His Gun, um, who will be attending the U of O. Uh, Emma Havlinka, and she will be uh, attending PSU, and then Nikki Rubotum uh, at Pitzer College. So each one of those students um, gained a ten thousand dollar scholarship. I do wanna thank Chilean Philly Zarda here um, at the district office and all the other folks who supported uh, the submission of the grant, we were very excited to get it, and then even more excited to build a turnaround and to give it to three uh, very deserving students. Um, so uh, thanks again, and I look forward to seeing any and all of you at graduation, or at least watching the livestream uh, to celebrate with those students and the families who have uh, made it through this thirteen-year journey uh, and the last year quite particularly being the most difficult, so, thank you very much.
It's amazing, thank you for sharing, Joe. Okay, next we will move into our consent agenda, and I'd like to call out a donation from Bella Vita Vineyards for seventeen thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars to Newburgh High School, and uh, huge thank you. And every time I see those donations in the packet, I'm just reminded that what a supportive community we have and amazing partnerships, thank you.
And I'm sure I request that policy sections FG and I be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, we will put those down at the bottom of the agenda and revisit them this evening. Right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Newburgh School Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as amended.
One second.
Okay, motion in a second, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Right, passes unanimously. Okay, and I saw Greg pop on just in time for the climate and culture report. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, board members, thank you for the chance to share tonight. Uh, I'll share my screen with you as we get this going.
I also see that you're in a, maybe a closet, or is that an office?
Now I'm actually at home in one of our guest rooms and trying to uh, arrange my camera such that you don't see whatever's going on over here. How's that? Uh, it's my privilege each year to talk about the climate and culture of our school district, and, and just wanna name the obvious upfront that it is really difficult to capture a whole picture of what forty-five hundred students and five hundred and fifty staff members feel is going on because there's such a wide variety to that, and a survey and a question doesn't do um, doesn't do justice to the complexity of what people feel. Uh, I missed the chance, this year has been a lot harder. Um, I normally like to be able to get in classrooms and move around in different, different buildings and get a feel for what's going on, and I've really missed that, and look forward to being able to have more of that in the future. So what we're giving is a snippet, uh, it's not a perfect one, but it's the best one that we have, and I think it does um, give us some good pictures of what's going on and a lot of good feedback for us uh, as a district, as a board, and as administrators to um, work through and improve because that's the biggest thing, we all want to get better each and every year. What's obvious to say about this year plus of pandemic is that this has been a very, very difficult year. There's no denying that, difficult for students, difficult for families, difficult for uh, our staff members. And so for this survey, what's the same and what's different? We've done the same question that we've done for uh, the last six years with the same delivery system with an online Survey Monkey uh, per, um, process. Our participation for staff was average, and it was below average for parents, and uh, I'm discouraged by that, but I think the reality is we have a lot of survey fatigue. Um, I've, I've myself, let alone what's happened in the different school buil- school buildings, but I myself have sent out four huge surveys in the last couple of months, and I think parents got worn out in that process. Um, we did more following up and feedback uh, than we ever had before of trying to get people to fill them out, um, but the participation was lower than usual. Uh, on the whole, the staff was a little more positive than parents, which is not surprising. Uh, cause, well, actually, I mean, you can take that both ways. It's, it's surprising in a positive way that staff uh, was able to be as positive as they were, as we'll see. We did not survey students this year, we normally um, have a process for doing that in our classes that is pretty time-intensive, and we felt with the um, little bit of time, uh, because of our cohorting and our process, um, we wanted to save that time for instructional time for students, so we did not administer students this year. And it's obviously been a year of closure and disruption. So here's some of the numbers, we'll start first with the staff climate and culture. We administered this May twenty-eighth through June third, and we had three hundred and fifteen responses, which is a little over half of our staff, and about uh, halfway, it's about mid-range of participation response in our last several of years with with the assortment that is very much matches what our staff looks like as far as the different classifications go. We have a couple of these questions that we have looked at for years, just comparing things that have been strengths in the past and seeing how we're doing in regard to them. And what you'll see here is a pretty healthy look at what's going on. And not a lot of fallout with some of the things that we feel have been strengths in the past. Sorry, my cursor has disappeared and I'm trying to change things so that I can see a little bit better. There we go. With this other one here, for our staff feeling safe at work has been, over the last two years, some marked improvement. And we're going to look at that a little more carefully in the slides ahead. Care about colleagues has been about in the mid-range of where it's been in the past. And freedom to do my job has been something that staff has felt much better about the last two years than in previous years. So let's take a deeper dive into the safety at work question. We've added a question in the last couple of years to say that if you've marked that you didn't feel safe at work, please give us a comment about why that is. And we had 23 comments given about why folks felt unsafe at work. 12 of those 23 comments were regarding staff division, staff conflict within their buildings. Five reflected comments about COVID fears. Two comments were about leadership pressure within their work environment. Two comments were about students running from the building and the danger that they feel for those students. One comment was that there's no way to be sure that a student won't come with an intent to harm. And one comment describing the fear of parent anger as one of the reasons they did not feel safe at work. So I think as far as what this tells us and what this helps us to understand is that only in a couple of cases is this talking about a physical sense of safety, but giving a better picture of what they mean when they answer that question. One of the things I want to do differently this year is to just be completely transparent and to put all these things forward before you. We have that other slide where we track certain questions that we follow each year. But what I wanted to do is go through and show you all of the other questions where 90% or more of our staff agreed or strongly agreed with them to show the other strengths that we have. So out of the questions on the survey, these are the other ones that showed strengths as well. I am confident of what to do in the event of an emergency, 91%. I'm given a fair opportunity to succeed in my school, 90%. I know what's expected of me at work, 94%. And so those are things that reflect places where our staff feels good. Now what about the opportunities? What about the things that we can improve upon? And again, like with the strengths, we have these questions that we've been tracking over years. And one of the things that's rather remarkable to find is that some of these, in this really difficult year, we've done a lot better on things that have been historically challenging. And I want to draw attention on this slide with these specific questions. There have been many who've wondered why we kept our schedule all year with classes scheduled only on Monday through Thursday. And one of the reasons that we did that is we recognized how important it was going to be in this pandemic time for our staff to have time to follow up with students outside of classroom schedule, to have time to plan and collaborate together, and to be able to have time to give them the training that they were going to need for all this new technology tools and curriculum and how to be able to teach in this kind of different environment that we faced for most of the year. And having that day of Fridays absolutely made a difference, as you can see here on these questions about professional development and about collaboration. The collaboration time with peers, 66% of our staff agreed that they had adequate collaboration time with peers. And the written comments that came after it specifically named having that Friday available, having that dedicated time available was tremendously important to them. And one of the things that we are hoping is, obviously, we plan to move back to our regular five-day-a-week schedule next week is we all now, as a system, see the power and the strength of collaborating and working together with each other. And so we're going to be working to find ways to do that as we move back to our full schedule. So this is something encouraging in the midst of a difficult year. I want to do the same thing with transparency on this side and just list every single question in the survey where there was less than 50% of our staff who agreed or strongly agreed with these statements. And here, these five, these five other questions where we see less than 50% agreement fall into two themes. Teachers didn't have data due to the state canceling assessments last year and reducing them this year. So that's an obvious reason why folks weren't able to agree with that statement, because we didn't have data to work through. And that's going to take some time to improve, because, as I said, even this year's assessments were shortened and not as detailed. But we are committed to work on that and to be able to help our teachers get what they need, especially as we return from the pandemic and know we need to identify student needs and figure out how to fill in gaps and make a good process through there. The other theme that you can see are school improvement plans for achievement that folks on the staff did not, were not aware, did not know the specifics of those plans. And I think that that's very clear, because it was difficult for us to be able to look ahead this year with all the challenges that we faced on a kind of day-to-day basis. But this shows us that we need to do that important work next year, to get back into building school improvement plans, to look at specific and detailed plans to be able to improve student achievement over the next three years. And we're ready to work on that with this data that we've received. Now we just got a whole bunch of questions that we're looking at that look at the different schools, the district-wide response on the left, and then the different schools and where they lie on these questions. Considering everything, I'm satisfied at my school. A fall-off from last year's 91% to 86% district-wide. But in, again, in light of that, this is showing good work on our staff's part to be able to work together and hang in there. And want to draw attention, as we work our way through all of these slides, notice the tremendous improvement at both middle schools over the last two years. There's been really good work done that we are really, with our staff, that has really helped them to feel better and more connected and more able to do their jobs, that we're hoping will be able to bear fruit down the road with the impact on students. My school, as well regarded in our community, definitely took a hit this year. And I think that should come as no surprise that the staff would believe that, because I think that there has been a lot of difficulty in the wider community with struggles of people with differing opinions on the pandemic and wondering why things were not in session more as normal. So you can see kind of the variations and the effects of that. I feel safe at work. We talked about a little bit earlier. Overall, down from 89% last year to 86% this year, a little bit of a negligible fallout, but higher than it's been over the last couple of years. My coworkers trust and respect each other. This is something that has different variations at the different schools. And different schools are working on different parts of how to build that sense of teamwork and trust and respect for each other. Students show respect to teachers. We're going to have more detail later in this presentation about behavior and other instances. But one of the things I want to draw our attention to is that staff agreed with this statement 80%. 80% of our staff agreed with this statement, and a 16% increase from last year and almost double from where we were two years ago. And one of the things that I'm really grateful to see in that is that the staff are the ones who are going to know how students are responding and whether they're showing respect or not. And I think there's been a lot of, a lot of work over the last couple of years that is beginning to bear fruit. I consider my school excellent, largely numbers are about the same, falling off about 5% district-wide. And again, in the level of pandemic, not surprising. My school headed in the right direction for student achievement. In some ways, I think there would even be some of us on the district staff who would look at this and would say, this almost ought to be 0%, because none of us wanted to have a pandemic, wanted to have the reductions that we had. None of us felt that this was going to be the best thing for student achievement at all. But doing the best that we can in this process to be able to meet for the needs of students and really, right now, really focusing on how can we best help meet the needs of all of our students as we come back in the fall and get everyone back on the right track and moving in the right way. So given that environment, I'm really, really pretty impressed with where these numbers are overall. Now to go to the parent survey. And as I mentioned before, the survey was conducted in the same timeframe, May 28 through June 3. And we had 430 responses, which is our lowest response over the last seven years. And did do a lot of work to try to bring those numbers up, but we're not able to do that successfully at this point. The one positive was that our responders more closely matched what our district actually looks like. But we still have a lot of work to do to be able to get that response level, get that feedback that more widely represents our entire student body. And so following the same pattern that we had, there are several things that we have followed over the years to see how things have done. And in general, there is a little bit of fall-off as parents look at this, but perhaps not as great as one might expect in the pandemic. One of the ones I wanted to draw your attention to was the ones about school facilities well-maintained. 29% of people marked neutral on that question, which I think reflects the fact that for most of the year, people didn't have a chance to see the facilities, didn't really know what is going on. And the beauty of that is when they get back in, when parents get back in to see, there's been a lot of maintenance that Larry Hampton's crews have been able to do because students were not in the building for a lot of the year. And we have some things with the bond coming up this summer that are going to be getting to work in our buildings as well. So it'll be exciting to see next year how this looks when people have a chance to see some of this work in progress. Wanted to again go through and find any of the strengths that were over 85%. And there was one that said, I know how to get school information when I need it. And being the communications person, I'm really glad to see that and want to get that up to 100%. And what about the opportunities? What about the things that historically we've struggled with? And again, one of the things that is surprising to look at the data is that we actually see some improvements in things that have been historically difficult during the pandemic. But then when I thought more about it, it's actually really logical and rational that more parents would be able to regularly check online resources, because that's all we had for a lot of this year. And so one of the bright spots in the difficulty is that we now have parents who have the skills and the ability to be able to find out what online resources they are and also be able to figure out 65% of them, how to be more informed about child's academic process. And I'm glad to see some growth in those areas and I'm convinced that we'll be able to carry that over after the pandemic. One of the things that I may be most amazed about is the center one there. That might be the brightest spot in this whole, this whole presentation, that 45% of our parents compared to where we've been in the twenties for many years feel that their child was challenged to their full potential. And this is exactly what is at the heart of education. And obviously, we want this to be 100%, and that's what we're going to keep working to do. Because we want every single child to have a pathway and to have a teacher and to have an environment where they are being, where their needs are met and where they are thriving, to be all that they can be. And again, excited to see some progress even in a year of pandemic, but know that our goal is to get to 100% for that one. A couple of other ones with a bit of surprising signs that areas have been struggles in the past, that 42% felt there were opportunities outside of the core content for their student to explore. And 59%, where last year we were at 7%, had a clear understanding of the clear expectation for the child's schoolwork. That probably has to do with the earlier one that having to be in an online environment and parents having to be responsible for so much of walking their student through the education has helped them be able to see what those expectations are. And it will be important for us to figure out how to build upon that and continue that as we move back to full-time in-person next year. Want to do the same thing here and make sure that we covered all of the ones, all of the questions that were less than 50% agreement by the parents, so that you can see those and have those right in front of you. We definitely want to improve on classroom lessons and their motivational qualities and how students feel involved. There's a theme in here, several of these that have to do with bullying and have to do with discipline as well. Some of that is that there were, as I went back and looked at these, a lot of neutral answers. People, we didn't have volunteers in the building at all this year because of requirements from OHA and ODE. And so people didn't see what was going on. And so there's a lot of people that had neutral answers. They didn't know how to respond to that. But we continue to focus on improving discipline and responding to bullying. And Karen Pugsley, this year, led a team of students, parents and staff to revise our student handbook, which you all saw as a board. And one of the things that I think is particularly helpful about that handbook is that it has a very clear description of the discipline process, so that students, parents and staff alike can see the steps and see in every kind of infraction what is supposed to happen and how the process works. And we're going to work hard in the fall to make sure that every student and family sees this new handbook, sees the discipline policies as a part of that. And I think that that will help everyone understand the discipline process and move us toward more fair and effective discipline in the future. Finally, these last three, some, a lot of neutrality on the counselor ones, just not knowing so much where that influence was. Only a quarter felt that the school provided helpful information to my child about college and career planning. Keep in mind that well over half of our respondents were from elementary schools. We don't do a lot about college and career planning in elementary. The school does set high learning standards for students. Only 48% agreed with that. And again, that's obviously one that we want to improve and get better. Actually, I'll stay back on this one. I just wanted to do a little bit of, that's not in the slideshow, about the open-ended feedback from parents. And a lot of what we asked in the survey was, what do you think is most important for schools to work on? What do you want your students to receive from public education? And most of those themes centered around work ethic, grit, personal responsibility, critical thinking, reading, writing and math. There were also parents who outlined social, emotional learning, mental health skills. One of the things that was easy to notice in the comments was there were lots of comments from parents about the importance of college not being for every student and teaching basic budgeting and personal finance ideas. And I actually realized that we can do a better job of communicating what actually is happening in our district. And I want to take a little chance to do that tonight in the part of this climate and culture report. For that whole comment of trade schools and other options to college, one of the things that is really impressive is that Newburgh High School excels with career and technology pathways. We definitely are not a one-size-fits-all, but we have done some really great work at creating all kinds of pathways and opportunities for our students. And we have the opportunity to expand that with the bond that was passed last November, and we're excited about that. Opportunities for manufacturing training, for healthcare, for welding. We even have students running their own business called Tiger Manufacturing. At Catalyst Alternative High School, they have Career Fridays, where they visit businesses every Friday to expose students to all the careers that are out there which don't require college. And there have been many times where students have seen lit up with whole new ideas of things they didn't know existed, and they could see a path for themselves and why education was important to lead them to that place and that they didn't have to go to college, that they could find a path that they could be excited about. So I'm excited about the things that we offer and want us to do a good job of communicating those things. Since there were so many comments about personal finance, I did want to just reiterate that we have pieces of that education in our senior required course called Economics, where they do teach things like personal budgeting and talk about credit cards and all of that sort of things. And that there is also an elective that is offered called Consumer Economics that is completely personal finance-focused. And so want parents and the community to know that those options are available and parents with that concern can encourage their students to forecast for that course to be able to meet those needs. So just some ones that we started doing last year on alignment with our strategic plan. And I'm just going to go relatively quickly through these, because what you're generally going to see is a falling off from this year for most of these things, but not a fall off the cliff kind of situation, and so it's been helpful. So ensure that every student engages with learning that's aligned to academic content standards. So some of the questions that we highlight that are, that come close to addressing those things, you can see here. And as I said, you can see a few percentage points of things falling off, but generally some good marks on this area. Providing opportunities for their unique talents and to offer a variety of learning experiences. This one, more of a fall-off again, because it was a difficult year of providing other opportunities. And just a reminder that we don't have the student data that we usually compare with students' response of how they feel about whether schools prepared them for future endeavors.
Greg, what do the two colors mean?
The two colors are, the lighter blue is the strongly agree with that statement, and the darker blue is they agreed with that. The two colors are the lighter blue is the strongly agree with that statement and the darker blue is they agreed with that statement. So it's kind of a Likert scale where they had multiple things that they could choose from. Ensuring students that they are live members of this community while providing supports for social and emotional growth. My child enjoys going to school. Again, I was glad to see those numbers where they were, even with a slight bit of drop. But there were parents that were able to see ways that their children were still, still enjoying going to school even through this year. I'm just going to go quickly through these because I've already spent a lot of time on these and they're in your packet for those to look at. School facilities, we talked about earlier. I'm encouraged to participate in school activities. I'm surprised again that this wasn't zero percent because we, we didn't let parents in the building this year. And that was solely because of guidelines from ODE. And we will look forward to returning to that next year and having community members and parents as a part of our school education and be able to have more activities that students and that families can watch their students participate in. Information on school communication coming from parent and a staff perspective. Always room for us to improve and have some ideas of what we're going to work on over the summer to try and help with this process. So some special focus areas, my school does a good job of addressing academic needs of most, of most students. And again, this is similar to the students with full, full potential. This is what's really important to us from a district level is figuring out how all the way across our system, we can meet the needs of every single student, wherever they are. And so again, a little bit of fallout from last year, but higher than the two previous years in that regard. Teachers well prepared to deal with the needs of all students. Again, some a little bit of improvement even from last year, which is helpful. And my school values diversity of, of the background and some work that we can do there. Closing the achievement gap is one of the things we're always focused on as a district. And the thing that just jumps out at me for this one is my school does a very good job meeting needs of all students, down to forty-four percent for parents. And so we, we basically have, you know, about forty-four percent who are feeling like we're doing a good job challenging them to their potential. And then forty-four percent saying we're not meeting the needs of all students. So we, we want to do better at that and want to figure out how we can align everything we're doing to meet the needs of the students that we have. Some stuff on behavior here, again, when we ask parents, do students respect staff? Most, you can, what you can see generally is thirty-one percent of those remark, marked the neutral category. They just didn't know because it was harder to find that process. But in general, there's a trajectory over the last couple of years that parents are seeing things moving in a positive direction. And as I mentioned earlier, staff is really seeing that positive direction continue to grow even through this year, which is a good thing and something we want to continue to work on. These are just some of the specifics for the different ones. Again, these are in your packet that you can work through. The biggest thing that you'll notice is most of the change from the previous year is an increase in the neutral response because parents or staff didn't know how to respond because they haven't been able to observe it. School reputation, again, we know that for some in the community that there has been disagreement with choices by the state and others that have wanted us to be back full-time. And so that reflects the reputation of our schools as well. And want to just reiterate again that we are making our plans to be back five days in person for all of our students in the fall. So kind of the final, final bottom line was what grade would you give your school for this year? And the most of, the highest choice was for a B at thirty-six percent. And I think C or above at eighty-nine percent is something that is remarkable and reflects that our staff has really, really worked hard in this climate this year. And we look forward to being able to improve. Pandemic recovery means we have a lot to do, so let's keep doing this together. And I am welcome to, I am open to hearing any questions that you might have as important.
Greg, there were a couple of slides closer to the beginning that were illustrating parents and staff who strongly agree. But then the top red strongly disagree. And I don't know if we want to flip back through, I'm assuming it's a typo, but I just wanted to make sure because, you know, that would change it. Yeah, keep going.
Way back at the beginning? Was it parent or staff?
I think it was staff and a parent. Keep going.
Backwards?
Yep, to the beginning.
Okay.
Here we go. Oh, there it goes. Nope, but go to the next one. No, shoot, where'd it go? Did other, other people saw that? Okay, keep going. Sorry. Here we go. Here's one.
This one, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it keeps doing that, but. So should it be agree or strongly agree?
Uh, yeah, I think that's a typo. Apologize for that.
Oh, no problem. I just wanted to clarify that. Any questions from the board for Greg?
I had a couple on the two sections about I feel safe at work and my coworkers trust and respect each other. You know, a lot of the schools are, seem like they're in a pretty good spot. But the one that sort of caught my eye was Edwards, you know, at or the feeling safe, it seems like it's a lot lower than all the other elementaries down at forty-two percent. And it dropped from eighty percent. And then on the trust my, my coworkers trust and respect each other, it dropped from eighty-eight percent to twenty-nine percent. Do you have any, any sense or ideas about why the big drop off of that particular school?
Yeah, there have been some difficulties at Edwards this year with staff tension. And it's been very well addressed and continuing to be addressed in the future by both the staff at Edwards, staff at the district, as well as bringing in outside folks with that. And it has been, it has been something that we are very well aware of and are working on.
Okay. What, what was the source of the staff tension?
I don't feel at liberty or the need to share that at this point.
I think you could, Brian, why don't you follow up with, with Joe on that and maybe me to get some more information if you'd like some more information? Any other questions for Greg?
I have a question about a couple of places where let's say where, I think it was about, oh, shoot, I can't remember the question precisely, but there were, were whether most students were being served well and I think this was in the parent section. And there are two such questions. And you use, you, you interpret them in terms of whether we were doing well at treating every group. So one is on, one was on closing the achievement gap. It's on page one eighty-nine. Where it says my school does a very good job of meeting needs of all students and it, you know, went down. Who knows whether that was COVID or not. But I don't really see that as a question that reaches, that, that is delivering information on whether every group gets, feels like they're, they're being having their needs, that needs met. Because if we're just getting most of all of them, it could be just some groups doing very well and other groups not doing well. And there was one other one just sort of like that came along pretty soon after. Can you say more about whether that is an indication that, you know, that the, that every group feels like they're being treated well or being served well or having their needs met well?
Sure, I can try to give that a shot. I think the first thing I'd say is that, that you're right, that there has to be a little bit of interpretation as to how groups apply because we're asking individual, either families or staff to share their experience. So on the parent side, we're asking about their students' experience. And so that's not the same thing as asking whether all groups are being identified. So when I read statements that my, my student is being challenged to their full potential, that, that's something that I want to see across the board as being a very strong number that would indicate that all of our groups by inference were being challenged to their full potential. And on the flip side of that, when you ask, when you do ask if all groups are being addressed, whatever the question is, addressed equally, sorry, I'm trying to go. I was having trouble being able to see my screen and while it was presenting at the same time, so I'm trying to take a look at those, what the other question is and the wording.
So yeah, the only one, I thought there were two, but I can only find one right now and it's on page one, the one on page one eighty-nine. The reason I ask that is if, if, if the survey keeps data on who's responding, particularly on the question like this, which I think this was directed at the parents, whether there was a difference depending on demographics, income level, whatnot, in terms of the, how that pattern looked. If it was forty-four percent across the board, then we would say everybody was feeling about the same. But if one group felt really good, another felt really bad, that would be useful data.
Sure.
You have that data.
Sure. I can, I can do some looking at that as you, if you would like me to do that. I can cross-reference those particular questions with our different demographic questions and see how we do. They are anonymous and so we don't ask income questions, so there won't be a way to look at our, our lower, our poverty numbers in regard to that question, but I can look at them some other ways and get that to the board.
Yeah, that might be good. Yeah, I think it might be useful to the Equity Committee, for example.
Hey Greg.
Yep.
Hey, I think, like, on the, especially the staff survey. I know, you know, from working or being there that a lot of staff don't take the time to do it because they don't feel like it's going to do any good or they don't feel safe putting their name anywhere near it, even if there's not a name on it. It kind of gets narrowed down into a pool of people at their particular school. So I mean, just moving forward, it's a tough year to do a survey because of the pandemic. But somehow moving forward would be kind of fun to figure out a way to kind of get past some of those hurdles that maybe staff have. So we can kind of reach them in a way to get a, try to get, you know, a hundred percent, you know, on one of their, their times, maybe. Try to figure out a way to do that, but I know this is a really tough one, but I just know working it, that's what I heard a lot is they weren't feeling really anxious about filling out, so they just didn't do it. And for whatever their personal reason is, that's up to them. But I, I think, you know, another question for another day is how we could try to engage them as much as possible to get the, the feedback, whether it's good or bad. And so how, and somehow they would feel safe that they could just be brutally honest, you know, good or bad with their, with their comments. That's, that's more related to staff, not, not the parent one.
Any suggestions other than an anonymous survey, how folks could feel comfortable speaking up?
I don't know, but it's a tough one. It's a, I know sometimes, you know, people, in the past, I would just say I've heard that distrust at the district office and how they felt like their answers would be used, maybe. Retaliation, maybe. I'm just, I'm going to the extreme negative here. So how to get them to, to do it, I don't know, that'd be more of a building, you know, administrator type thing to try to get all those people in the same room at the same time when they have a staff meeting, maybe.
But if they don't trust their administrator, are they likely to speak up in a staff meeting rather than an anonymous survey? It just seems like a way of throwing doubt on the survey, just throw that out there.
Yeah. I think, I think here's what I would say, Dave. I would say, one, yes, I agree with you. I will, I will, I will entertain any ideas and we'll work any way we can to get feedback from staff and from parents. I think it's really important to get honest feedback because we want to improve. The second thing that I would say is that having, having read every single one of the open-ended comments that were in these and having been the first climate and culture survey that I did came at the end of the year where there were a lot of layoffs. I can assure you that most staff have absolutely no problem at all being brutally honest with the things that they're upset about. We saw it in this year, we saw it in previous ones, that they, they are sharing that information in the comments and we're seeing it. So to me, that gives that much more weight to the aggregated numbers that we see on the, on the, on the survey that, you know, we are, we are getting that from people who are also vocalizing through the comments ways that they're really displeased with what's going on.
Yeah, I was saying, you know, I'm not saying on the negative side, even on the positive side where they've got some really great stuff.
Sure.
We don't hear that too, so. You know, the, tough year to do a survey though. Appreciate all the.
Sure. And like I said, I, like I said, on staff side, we did fairly well. We were about in the middle of the road for participation. But parents not as well. And so we'll work hard at that next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Brian, is it a quick question or something?
On the question about the school provides helpful information to my child about college and career planning is only twenty-five percent. You said that, you know, is probably largely because we don't do any in elementary. Do we have the data in such a way that we can break out what that number is for the high school?
Yeah, good question.
You bet. I can do that.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. So in the, the benefit of time, I'm going to move us along so we're already a little bit behind. But as always, please, if you have more questions. No, it's not you, Greg. It's, you have anything that.
It was me. I was the one yacking.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Greg. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our school-based health center report from Dr. Neff.
Good, good evening. Thanks for letting me have some time to talk to you all about adding health services to our wellness center in the form of a school-based health center. So typically I have a fancy slideshow with lots of charts and graphs and things. But we've done quite a bit of that. And seeing how you all really dug into Greg's slides, maybe I'm glad I didn't provide slides for tonight. My plan is to keep it short and sweet and to talk to you all just directly and straightforwardly. I have a few things to say and then I'll open it up for any questions. I, I'm not going to slog through any of the material that was in the plan in the packet. But that's all there for you and I'm happy to answer questions about any of that. As a side note, I think this is at least my fourth, at, at least my third time in front of you all talking about our work towards a school-based health center. We are definitely not trying to hide anything. We've sought parent and student and community engagement in extensive ways as that plan shows. And we're also following all the ORSs. The school-based health center is also part of our bond package that our community robustly supported. So, yeah, I, I want to give some context and a few thoughts about where we're at in the process and then say some words of gratitude. And I will echo the catchphrase of the night that this is really all about the kids. Okay, so the immediate reason I'm here tonight is that we finally have one of the last key pieces that we need for a school-based health center. Something that's actually very hard to find, especially in a pandemic. And that is a willing medical sponsor for our school-based health center. And I'll tell you about who that is and how that came into place in just a minute. So four things you need are a building space. And so the, the first one is a building space. We are just so grateful to the community of Newburgh and Dundee for approving a bond that included a school-based health center. And doing this work, you know, I heard a lot about other school districts that really want to do a school-based health center and simply can't because the cost of building a new space or even converting an existing space can be fiscally challenging. So, you know, that's one of the four things and it's a tough one for a lot of districts and we have that. So we're super grateful to our whole community for their support on that one. Second thing you need is an agreement with the local public health authority. They have to hold the contract and provide oversight. One of the things I'll say a few times is this idea that we are not the medical professionals at all. And this is really us partnering with the medical professionals. So we are very grateful to Yanville County Health and Human Services for their collaboration and partnership throughout this process. And they've really helped the pieces come together very smoothly. throughout this process, and they've really helped the pieces come together very smoothly, especially in the midst of managing a pandemic. So building space, agreement with local public health authority, the third thing you need is school board approval. So that's why I'm here tonight. I need to get evidence of your support. In some ways, in talking to OHA about this, we think we might already have it because this, the bond included a school-based health center, so that could serve as an indicator of school board support for school-based health center. But we wanted to do our full due diligence and make sure we're checking all the boxes completely. So that's why we're talking about this tonight. So last, but very, very much not least, is a medical sponsor. This is a healthcare organization that will run the clinic, provide medical oversight. Yeah, we are in the business of education, not medical treatment, so we need a medical sponsor. You can insert your jokes about being a doctor, but not that kind of doctor right here. So we finally have a medical sponsor, and I'm so, so grateful. Providence Medical Group has stepped up to serve our community in this way. This is an endeavor that is not without some degree of risk on their part. SBHCs are very hard to make financially sustainable, and especially now when hospitals are having a really tough time recovering from the pandemic, so I think just really shows their care and commitment to this community. So I'm just delighted. We've had this amazing ongoing collaborative relationship with Providence for over four years now. Providence is already providing service for us, at least for three years, with no complaints, really only positive responses, and now they want to do more, so. And, and they want to do it for free for our kids. And one of the things that our community engagement process revealed is that people in our community really like Providence. So in so many ways, this is an absolutely ideal scenario for us. And, you know, thinking about this kind of for the long run, yeah, honestly, I think this might end up being possibly the most generous gift that an outside organization has offered to the district. You know, I think when we think about the the staffing that they'll be providing and just how in an ongoing way, the equipment and all the pieces that they're bringing in above and beyond what the, the grant funding provides, I think this will really, really add up. So I just can't say enough about our gratitude, how much it means to us to have such a dedicated organization to work alongside, to make our community better and to help our kids to be healthy. So nitty-gritty, down to brass tacks and all that, we are finally at the point where Oregon Health Authority is standing by to shift, excuse me, the sixty thousand dollars per year of funding to Providence Medical Group through Yanville County, and they just need evidence of your support. So I am on a bit of a deadline. I'll share that. My final report, all these pieces is due June fifteenth, so a week for today. And if we show that we have all these requirements met, then we get funded and we can have a school-based health center. So at this point, I'll happily answer any questions that you might have.
Luke, I'll share that, you know, I attended the Bond Development Committee meetings, and one of the very important elements of the bond package that they helped develop was a clinic at the high school, was a school-based health clinic. And then, so that was part of the bond package that we put forward, and as you mentioned, it was overwhelmingly approved, and that was a key element of that package. You know, I've been supportive as a board member all along of school-based health clinics, and our community has shown that. You know, the, the, the next board is going to be here to oversee how that gets implemented and how it gets developed, and there'll be the battles that come around school-based health clinics. You know, hopefully, we will be able to avoid the rancor and anger that often will go there and really focus on a Newburgh solution and making sure that the students in Newburgh get the health services that the community wants for them.
So thank you, Luke. And thank you again for that, the packet presentation too. There was a lot of really great information. In the spirit of time, does anybody have any pressing questions? Okay, I'm assuming that a motion would be enough for the, the funding source. Okay, but entertain a motion. There's not one in the packet, so you guys are going to have to improvise.
I moved that the- Go ahead.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
I moved that the Newburgh School Board of Directors approve sponsoring the school-based health project as described in the packet.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And opposed? And we'll say Dave is abstaining since he's not here. So it passes five to two with Director Shannon opposing and Director Brown abstaining. Nope, that's not him. Okay. Great. Thank you, Luke.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, so we're about five minutes behind schedule, but let's go ahead and take a quick break and meet back here at eight thirty-five. It is eight thirty-six. So if you're, you're around, come back.
How many people are watching?
Looks like twenty-seven.
Great.
And then we have nineteen on the panel.
It was over fifty earlier.
It was over fifty. Wow, great.
Okay, we are back in session. So our next item on the agenda is our Newburgh Police Department proclamation. Dave, are you with us? Okay, take it away.
Well, I, I guess generated quite a bit of talk out there, but you want me to read the, the final draft I have?
Sure.
Newburgh Dundee Police Department appreciation. Whereas the Newburgh School Board would like to acknowledge and say thank you to the Newburgh Dundee Police Department, and whereas our Newburgh Dundee Police Department is rated as one of the very best police departments in the state of Oregon. And whereas the Newburgh Dundee Police Department has continued to lead an exemplary effort to provide all of our residents, children of our Newburgh Dundee schools, parents, community members, business owners and all visitors a safe place to live to do business and to visit. And whereas doing all this while dealing with a worldwide pandemic and political upheaval across the United States of America, and now therefore be resolved that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors says thank you to the Newburgh Dundee Police Department and every officer and support personnel in the department for all their dedication and hard work serving the communities of Newburgh and Dundee signed, adopted this day. Chair Brady Pinner at the bottom of that on the signature thing. So again, I think that for me, it's, it's a misconstrued of, of why people think we're doing this. It's like, it's just say thank you to something that when we're in an unsafe year, and all of a sudden we have an opportunity to say thank you for keeping us safe in our community. I wasn't looking at this outside of our communities, just within our community. There's been a lot of talk this year about not feeling safe in a lot of different situations. And for me, my whole point of this was to say thank you because, you know, we get the, the blessing of living in a community where we are safe, and that was the whole intent of this, so. I think we've said thank you to, you know, lots of people and a lot of different things this year, and you know, as a school board, we do work with the police department, the, the city council, the fire department, park and rec, and all kinds of different things. We work with lots of different agencies around the community and you know, I think when they go out of their way to really help us out as a school, a school board, a school district where they work really hard to keep us safe, that was the intent of this. Just as we have all kinds of agreements across the board with the Shalem Park and Rec, the city, we all try to work hand in hand and, and across all lines. And so that was the intent of this, so I think some people kind of got the wrong intent that this is shouldn't have happened, or it's political. Nope, it's just to say thank you.
Hey, Ron, did you get a chance to look back at past year's proclamations and kind of get an idea of, you know, how often and to what groups we do them?
Yeah, I've, I went back as far as my notes go, which is two thousand twelve. They're not complete in two thousand twelve or thirteen. I'm missing some of the packets, but from about two thousand fourteen on there, they're complete. In, as all the way back, we've done proclamations for teachers. There's been the reading of, sometimes the reading of the governor's proclamation about how rates the boards are, but the board itself has never proclaimed that about itself. Then we, we, I think we added right after I started classified. They may have done that before, but I didn't have it in two thousand twelve. I didn't see it until two thousand thirteen. I didn't see it either on the board packet or on the predicted agendas. I looked at both. In two thousand fourteen or fifteen, I didn't write it down, but right around there, we, we added school vol- school volunteers, volunteers in the schools. And then in two thousand nineteen, we added school counselors. Those are the only groups that I, I saw that we had proclamations for. We did also do proclamations for a attendance awareness week. The state has had, I don't know exactly where we are right now, but three or four years ago, we were one of the lowest in the country in attendance rates, so I think the Department of Education, the governor encouraged us to have attendance awareness. And then there's been a couple of bullying prevention week, at least one that I got of bullying prevention week proclamations. I did not find any where we, we, we had proclamations praising anybody outside the district entirely. All of them were either, all the people we praised were either, were people working in the district and one compared the other, including the volunteers.
Thank you. Thank you for spending the time to do that. So we kind of have two paths. As a board, we can choose to, you know, edit this or, or accept it as it is, and then it would be put in the consent agenda for our next meeting. That's generally how we do the first and second reads. Are there any questions or thoughts or ideas of how the board would like to proceed?
Do you need a motion for that, Randy, or?
Well, yeah, as, as a board, we could say we want to accept it as it's worded. So you could, yeah, we could make a motion for that. It would be then, or we could just-
I'll move to add the proclamation as worded to the consent agenda for the next meeting.
That functions like a, like an approval on first reading, I would guess. So be another way of saying that, probably.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion is second. Is there discussion?
I don't agree with, with the wording that he, when he mentions about the pandemic and the political unrest. I, I don't feel that the police department, I mean, I, I asked about this, if the police department helped the school district with food deliveries with Wi-Fi or hot, what did this, what did the police department do for the school district during the pand- food deliveries with Wi-Fi or hot, what did this, what did the police department do for the school district during the pandemic? And we couldn't find anything except maybe possibly visiting, doing a welfare check. And so to me, to, to speak, speak out that they, they supported us during the pandemic and the political unrest doesn't seem, it brings in the political situation also that, that I, I don't feel I can speak, agree to that.
Well, I don't read it to say that they did anything for us during the pandemic. I just think it's acknowledging the, you know, extra hardship that everyone is going through, but particularly law enforcement right now is a, an especially hard job to have. And I think I interpret that language as just a nod towards that simple fact of life.
Well, I, I don't feel it fits in, in what we as a school board should be acknowledging.
I have similar concerns, not necessarily around the language, but more just the adoption of it because we don't, we haven't had proclamations to say thank you to all of our partnerships. I think if we had a general proclamation saying thank you to everyone who partners with the district and supports our students and our community, I would be very much in favor of that. I think trying to call them out one by one would be incredibly time consuming. But if we're going to do one individually, I would recommend that we go through our partner list and do a proclamation and thanks for every single partner organization that has supported our students and school district. And if we can't do that, then I would recommend a generalized one. If we choose to move forward with this, I do have some language though, that I would like to include.
I think the idea of acknowledging more of our community partners is a great idea, and I would definitely accept or support doing that for other organizations that we partner with throughout the course of the year. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I guess my comment was more, or part of the discussion that I want to be a part of is if this is in the consent agenda, I'm interested in knowing what does the schedule look like for future proclamations? Because I would want to get our partners in a similar proclamation specifically, you know, we during this pandemic, there has been a lot of death. And with that comes grief and mental health. And May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we've had, you know, we have really good relationship with partners that are supporting us in these endeavors. And I think that they deserve to be acknowledged as well. So.
Brian, is that something you would be interested in taking on?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I can work with the district's district office to come up with a list of our partners that we should try and work into a calendar for acknowledgement.
Do you think it's realistic to be able to kind of at least get an idea of the calendar for the consent agenda? As to address Director Penya's concerns?
A set, probably not by the next meeting. But yeah, I'm, I will certainly take that on and try to accomplish them.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there more conversation around this motion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And opposed? And abstaining. Okay, motion fails with two, Director Brown and Director Shannon voting yes. Directors Penner, Pyros, and Penya, look, I didn't, I just now realized for all the three Ps, that's exciting. Voted no, and then Directors Mock and Woodruff abstained.
I think, I think I should make a comment about why I abstained, since I'm, I'm here to represent and I should vote on these things. My own study showed that we hadn't extended this beyond our own connections. And I am undecided as to whether it's a good policy or not to start expanding our proclamations into the wider world. I, I think the idea of generally acknowledging partners is good, but I also suspect that some of those partners will be controversial, and I'd hate to see a proclamation come up and get turned down after there's been other ones, because then it would just be a disaffirming to the partners. And, and I'm, I wish I had a clearer idea, a clearer vision of how this is going to work. So I could, at this point, as an outgoing board member, be ready, ready to commit the future to a policy of, you know, we're going to do a cycle of partners. If this were to come up, well, I don't, I'm not encouraging it to come up necessarily next time, but if that question were answered, then I'd be able to support this. But because it isn't, and I didn't want to commit beyond my, like my two weeks term or three weeks, well, it's my turn, I decided to abstain.
I would like to explain my no vote because I actually have an amendment I'd like to make to the motion to adopt amended language and like to go ahead and read that. And I haven't typed out in case we need to actually include it if it passes. So I would like to add to the proclamation, whereas the Newburgh School District in partnership with the NDPD strives to ensure the physical and emotional safety of each student, staff, and visitor, and to work collaboratively to build a community based on mutual understanding of values. Whereas in this partnership, the inherent dignity and rights of every person in our community are recognized and upheld, including all students and staff regardless of perceived race, ethnicity, gender, or sexual orientation. Whereas the Newburgh School District Board of Directors appreciates and supports the ongoing evolution of partnership with the Newburgh Dundee Police Department to continually ensure that students and staff's needs are at the forefront of all decisions and collaborations. I wrote that because I felt like that tied it in to the relationship that we have with the police department and it connected it to the work that we're doing in collaboration with them.
I move that we accept that amendment.
Or you could be offensive to the police department by saying it that way, because you're kind of saying that they're not doing that already. And that's, that's not true. They are, you know, when we're talking about a worldwide pandemic and the political upheaval in, in our town, we're, we're all safe from some of the stuff that's happened in other areas because of our police department. And we live in an incredibly safe community. That was really the intent of this. So by trying to add that amendment in there, you're kind of basically telling the police department that you need to do better or you're not doing that at all right now.
Randy, could you read it again? It was a mouthful. And could you, could you?
Yes, and I'll address the intent too, Dave, because it's, it's good to hear that feedback. No, my intent is definitely to connect this proclamation to the, the work that's actually being done in the district. I think that was one of the feedbacks from our last, our first read was that it didn't actually mention the partnership or collaboration, and it seemed to be disconnected from the work that was going on. So this is an effort to just bring it back in, and it's certainly aspirational of a reminder of, of, you know, what we should all be here, what we should all be doing, and it's not meant to be accusatory in any way. So I'll read it again. Whereas the Newburgh School District in partnership with the Newburgh Dundee Police Department strives to ensure the physical and emotional safety of each student, staff, and visitor, and to work collaboratively to build a community based on mutual understanding of values. Whereas in this partnership, the inherent dignity and rights of every person in our community are recognized and upheld, including all students and staff regardless of perceived race, ethnicity, gender, or sexual orientation. Whereas the Newburgh School District Board of Directors appreciates and supports the ongoing evolution of partnership with the Newburgh Dundee Police Department to continually, sorry, continually ensure that students and staff's needs are at the forefront of all decisions and collaborations. It's, there's a motion and a second, so we can definitely discuss it. This is, you know, I'm one board member with a suggestion.
Amendment to be saying that they're currently doing that. Is that a fair, fair interpretation of what you're saying in that amendment?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I hope that the district is striving to do this. I hope that the police department is striving to do this in collaboration. They can do it even better together.
I'm not sure. Was there a second? I heard the motion. Rebecca.
Yeah, Rebecca made the motion I seconded.
Okay, I hear the second, sorry.
Is there any other?
The way I hear it, I also see or hear as this is already happening, and it's something that we expect to continue happening.
And that we're happy it's happening.
Correct. And we do have, from what I understand, a healthy relationship with the department, which is why we have an SRO in our district.
Okay, is there further discussion?
So Brandy, can we, could you take what we had and then kind of include that in there? And then next meeting, we can bring it back up and look at and see how that looks to us.
So what I would, yeah, definitely. I can put it back in there and it'll be in the consent agenda. So if, if any board member doesn't, you know, like it or wants to talk more about it at that meeting, they can pull it out of the consent agenda and we'll, we'll talk about it.
Randy, are you pending this to the, to the beginning of the whereas's or where, where is it going?
Wherever we think it should. I hadn't really finagled where it should be fit in at this point, because I wasn't sure if anybody would be interested in adopting it.
I think, I think it's a minor detail, but it, it probably doesn't go right before, because the first one, Dave's is the introduction to the topic, but anywhere after that.
Suggest maybe after the third whereas.
Okay, that's where I'll put it, and we can put it in there. And if you all see it, and like I said, want to change it, we can always pull it out of the consent agenda. Okay, we need to vote on it.
Just so I'm clear is that we're commending this. And then yours is just the amendment, and that'd be a separate vote, because we've just not put it, I don't know. We could prove it as a, as first read, and it'd be basically where Ryan wanted to put it in the agenda. So yeah, so right now it's just the amendment.
Yeah. Okay, is everybody clear? So we're voting to add this wording, edit the document, it will be in the consent agenda, and we can pull it out if, if there's more discussion needed next week. Okay, so motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, and opposed? And abstaining. Okay, so it passes six to one with Director Woodruff abstaining.
I, I want to make clear that I'm, I am approving the amendment. I still haven't personally decided what I think about the idea of the, of the resolution itself. I think it's improved, but I'm still unclear that I want to vote for extending these resolutions. So, okay.
Okay. Good. People will be paying attention to the consent agenda next week. That's what we want. Okay, next up, we have Nikki to talk about our budget adoption.
Okay, so in your packet, the language is included in, to make the three motions that we need tonight to adopt the budget. There were no questions submitted to me for any added clarification, anything along those lines. So I don't have anything to share that way. So we're just looking for the motions to move forward and adopt this budget.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we, that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt Resolution twenty twenty oh nine, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Newburgh School District twenty-nine J, adopting the two twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget as presented by title only.
I second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. All right, we've got a couple more motions, so we'll just keep it rolling.
Um, Madam Chair, I'll move to have the permanent tax rate on adware taxes of four thousand, four point, no, four thousand. To be clear, I did not say four thousand, four point six six one six dollars per thousand. Be applied to the taxable property within the district as determined by the Emory County, Clackamas County, and Washington County Tax Assessors for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two year.
I second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Right, last one.
Yeah, I'll do a trifecta. I've never had a trick like this before. I moved to levy the adware lower on taxes for debt service at six million, four hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred six dollars.
It's nine o'clock.
She can't second. We need a board member.
I second.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right. The motion is second. Is there discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Nikki, and thank you, Budget Committee.
Great, thank you.
All right, next up is our proposed board meeting calendar. So currently, we meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. Going forward, how do returning board members, how does that work in your schedule? Or are we interested in changing that?
I don't know, it seems to be consistent, which has been nice. You know, you can kind of plan around the, you know, just like the second and fourth, you know, Tuesday. So it kind of does give you a chance to get out on your calendar and avoid, you know, stuff. So I, I like the consistency of the second and the, and the fourth. I mean, if it was the, the first and the third, that'd be, I just like the consistency. It's been nice that way. So thank you for that.
Does Tuesday night not work for any members?
It'll work.
Joe, how about the district? Is Tuesday night working well? Sorry, Dave, go ahead.
No, no, I was just kidding. I would say it'll work until the first conflict, but you know, it seems to be pretty safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday is actually great for us because if there are questions on the packet, and maybe we'll come back on Monday, we can get them answered or organized or prepared for the Tuesday meeting. So Tuesday is better than a Monday. Just gives us some time to, to make sure we can come prepared for additional questions that may come up from the packet delivery on Friday. So, yeah, worth while.
Okay. It's not something we need to necessarily vote on. There's no motion. It's more of a, an agreement by board members that will have it on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Everybody, looks like everyone's comfortable remaining on that schedule. Okay, I did speak with one new board member, incoming board member, and they also didn't have concerns about it being on a Tuesday. So I think it should be okay. All right, well.
And from what I've seen in the past, you guys have discussed it at one meeting, and then it's usually brought forth for a final approval at the following meeting, probably on the consent.
Thank you for that. Yeah. Okay, so look for that in the consent agenda. I agree. I think keeping it consistent is important, and if it's working for all of us, it's the easiest road. Okay, next up, we've got our board retreat plan. So you know, traditionally, this is held in the summertime, generally before school starts to, you know, have, help onboard new members or set board goals or have discussion. And it's really up to the incoming chair and the board to, to plan that and to get it going. But the reason we put it on here is I think it could be really important to have a date on all of our calendars, because we know that with a more return to active normalcy, we're all getting potentially booked up. And I think Trevor is on the call. Is he still on the call, Jen?
Um, no, actually, he left a little while ago. I have not seen him return. So sorry, he's not here.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you for inviting. We were hoping you'd be able to make it for this part of the discussion, but not knowing our schedules, what are of our two new board members, how would the board like to proceed? Would you all like to choose a date now? And hope that it works and revisit it if needed, or are we waiting till July? And my concern, I'll just say really quickly with waiting till July, is that if we are looking to get training from an outside group or speaker from an outside group or speaker um or working with schedules, it could just get trickier the longer we wait, but that's my my only concern.
I'm fine to wait, um, at least until we have uh some sense of the new members' schedules. Otherwise we'll just be shifting it anyway.
Could we ask for people to submit dates? And also our new board members, so that by next meeting we could come to a a consensus?
I know, uh, it might even be possible to use a tool like the doodle calendar tool to find dates, uh, that usually helps. Otherwise, if you ask dates and individuals give you one or two dates, they hardly ever line up, but the doodle allows them to show all the dates that might work.
It's a great suggestion. Jen, are you, are you versed in doodle polls?
Very much so, yes.
Okay, good, I am not, so I I would leave that up to you. Okay, so is the board comfortable proceeding that way of of Jen organizing a doodle poll out to us and including the two new board members? Or two incoming board members, I should say. Okay.
Okay, does it have to be on a a Saturday, Sunday, because those fill up pretty fast in the in the, you know, for all of us.
Yeah, I think um a weekday is honestly going to be better, but you know, we'll put those in the doodle poll.
Okay. I'm thinking like a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, something like that, that wouldn't impact uh somebody's ability to have a long weekend or, you know, if they're if they're trying to get away to do something.
I mean, I work full time Monday through Friday, so that's a little bit challenging for me, but.
Yeah, same, um, are you suggesting like an evening thing? Because typically we've normally done that during the day.
Jen, could you send out a mix of daytime, evening, weekend, weekday?
Yeah, you can pretty much so send out um a full, you can select a day and you can have all the times available and everyone can kind of put in their own schedule as to what their availability versus what they're not available for, and then it will compile everything together and we'll find a a time that works.
So in order to do this, we should probably, or you as a board, to discuss how much time you want to set aside, so are they, we should put them into four hour chunks or eight hour chunks or six hour um or a couple of them in those times, so if we look for either evening or, that would probably help us rather than try to fill out your entire schedule for the next two months on a doodle poll, which while fun, is probably a bit more work than we need, so if we could figure out, if you as a board like to discuss what like chunks of time we should be putting together, that might help us narrow it down a bit.
I think this is a perfect year for a twelve hour board retreat.
No. You're gonna scream from this one run. Thank you, Joe, that's a great suggestion, how do how do we feel about that? Time wise, are we thinking four hours, eight hours, one day, two days?
Definitely not eight hours, I probably can't go more than four hours straight.
And I, you know, depending on what the incoming chair and board want, you know, maybe one, four hours enough, um, but I would suggest we schedule two just in case.
Yeah, I would agree, I think maybe, you you know, even four hours, you know, it could be long, but I mean, just like three, four hours and you know, have a couple of, one could be a theme of something, you know, more uh you know, policy wise, and one could be more uh, you know, geared towards uh you know, how how the board works and that kind of stuff with OSBA and everything, so. And the district office, a big one, you know, probably even bigger with the district office, how we fit in with them, you know, make sure we stay on on track so we're not getting in their way. Or making it harder for them.
Is it usually August we do it in?
We've done it in July, I think traditionally.
We haven't done it in August a couple of times too, because July didn't work, but usually they try to do it in July soon as we can.
And knowing my personal schedule, I think August is actually going to work better for me if we have to look at a a weekend, but if, Jen, if you could include some July and some August. Couple four hour chunks, just everything, it's like a hodgepodge of all the doodle poll options, please. No, I'm kidding, I hope you have some direction, do you need more direction from us? Okay. All right, everyone's comfortable moving forward, we'll look forward to that.
This is gonna be Sun River.
Yeah, yeah, just for four hours though, the other thirty six, you're on your own. Okay, we're back to Nikki for um our capital bond project fund.
Sorry, I had to get my background noise quiet, um. I just need to update the budget um for the capital projects fund. When we initially received the funds, we dumped it under one function because we didn't have um all the budget numbers from our company yet. Um, and so now as we've started to move through that, we have a, we need to spread it out between a different a few different functions, so we have some staffing coming out of it, different services coming out of it. So this resolution is just to spread the budget spending authority between those different functions, it's not increasing anything. Um, so it's reducing out of the four thousands and spreading it um into a couple of other areas. Um, so that's all, it's really to just be compliant with budget law. Um, are there any questions?
Okay.
I move that the Newburgh uh School District Board of Directors adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash ten, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Newburgh School District twenty nine J, moving appropriations with the bond capital projects fund by title only.
Was it Rebecca who seconded?
I did.
No, it.
Ron, Ron seconded, okay, thank you. Okay, with a motion in a second is their discussion. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously, thank you Nikki.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we had one addition to our policy, uh Director Shannon asked that we pull out, or I'm sorry, one addition to our agenda. Director Shannon asked if that we could please pull out uh those three sections of policy, so as a board, we will move into discussion around that. Director Shannon, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, so um I'm going to move to table uh the policies. You know, we got uh what I thought was a very respectful uh communications from our two new coming uh members, and I'll go ahead and read those, I guess, so that they can be in our minutes. Uh Renee Powell wrote to us, um, she said, "To the school board members and superintendent, this is Renee Powell, newly elected board member, I am not able to call in this evening to make this request, so I am sending this email to you uh to let you all know that I am aware that the board will be looking at adopting one hundred and eighty nine pages of policy changes tonight at the board meeting. I object to this maneuver and would like to have a voice in the process once I get sworn onto the board. This sends a bad message to the community and the newly elected members, we should have a voice in the process, thank you for your time and for considering my opinions on this matter." And then uh Trevor DeHart wrote to us uh and said, "Hello, board members, i- is my understanding that the board is poised to pass one hundred and nine eighty nine pages of policy changes under the consent agenda? As a newly elected board member, uh, a month from being sworn in, I would ask that you table these changes until the new board has a chance to review them. It is my hope that the new board can work together closely or work closely together in a spirit of cooperation to ensure that our children, parents, teachers, and community have the most effective, safe, and open school system available. In the spirit of transparency and openness, I feel that the policies have a direct impact on that. After meeting with Brandy Penner, it was my takeaway that as we look ahead to the new board, we envision a board that is fair and open to civil discourse and vigorous debate on policy, which leads to an outcome that is best for all stakeholders. Please consider my request to table this most important task of policy review until the new board has the opportunity to work together, review, and pass the best policies for the school district. Very respectfully, uh Trevor DeHart, so I will move to table the uh policies." I'll second.
Okay, with the motion in a second is their discussion.
Uh, I'm going to support this motion, I I will protest that they word maneuver. There was no maneuver here, nobody was trying to do anything to anybody. We were trying to be kind to the next board and if they've asked this, then let's remove that objection.
Yeah, that, my feedback is similar, you know, a lot of what's in there is administrative. And you know, if they want to take that on, I I hope they're aware that they're going to be reliant on staff and the amount of staff time they're going to take up uh dealing with some uh mandated and administrative changes. You know, it would have been nice just let them get passed and then pull out the ones that they wanted to deal with, that would have been a lot less burden on the staff. Um, but I certainly don't want to leave a bad taste in their mouth.
The, I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that the, that has gone into these policies. Um, the Policy Committee has been meeting for over two years every month. And the, for two hours going through each policy with with Ozba, with Joe, with Greg. And then with how how Ron was asked at the last meeting to to look through the the policies and to present what the basic is. I I I just value Ron's work on this. And I I hope we're not passing this off without doing our due diligence. And doing doing the wor- there's going to be plenty of of policies ahead for the new board to to approve. This is only partial of of F, G, and I. That it's not, and there's very few contra- I don't know if there's any controversies and and if you'd read all the policies and if you could bring policies that you don't agree with, we could discuss it, but the hold off on all the policy work that we've done already. Um, there was no maneuvering, there was no wanting to to um do a fast one on the new members and and I respect their opinion, I wish they hadn't had um done what Bob suggested was to let us know which policies were would be agreed just to them. And we could have pulled them out, but to to stymie the whole project, um I I'm I'm disappointed and I and I want to thank Ron especially for all the hard work he's done on this.
Yeah, Rebecca, I think so, excuse me, what Brian?
Sorry, Madam Chair, um, David Brown's computer died on him, so I have him on speakerphone on my cellphone. Um, I don't know if that is a problem for us or not, but I will just put my cellphone here and he'll be on speaker.
Can he plug it in?
Hmm?
Can he, can he plug it in?
Plug in his computer.
He said he lost his power cord. Dave, can you hear us?
Yeah, we just came back from vacation and find it, so, sorry, um, it's dead and I'm on my phone, that's all I got, guys.
Can you call it on your phone, so, you know, like the connect on Zoom via your phone?
Yeah, you shouldn't be able to.
Yeah, if you go into your email on your phone, you can click on the link and then you'll be able to, we'll be able to see you and you'll be able to have it.
Okay, I'll try that.
Hey Dave, I have the the number here, um. It's three one two, you have a pen? Three one two six two six six nine, uh, six seven nine nine, so three one two six two six six seven nine nine, and is there a code he has to type in?
If if that's the right number, uh, he'll he'll have to click saying that he's Dave or something and then he.
No, there there will be a meeting ID and a password that he would have to enter that way.
Okay, the webinar ID, Dave, it is eight nine.
I am, sorry, Brian, can you go ahead and unmute yourself and give that to him, just because I don't want, you know, everybody, thank you. So one of the concerns I really had about this was that I I looked back in this process that we hired OSBA um for, which was an, you know, entire policy review, um, the contract was meant to expire in August of twenty twenty. And they were, they have been very generous in working with us through the pandemic and through the fires and through the ice storm. Um, recognizing that we've had difficulties in getting together. And so I agree with Rebecca, I think we're already over scheduled on this, and my concern is that this is just taking up more time because there there really isn't anything in there that anybody has a specific issue with. And there's going to be more policies coming, there's going to be more policy work to do for the next committee. And I really, it doesn't make logical sense to me to take one business item off of the agenda. I mean, if if we're going to go on this route, we should cancel all the board meetings until the next new members are on it, it doesn't make sense to take one thing and say we're not going to do this until the new board is assembled. And I don't think that any of us want to spend this meeting or the next meeting waiting to see what members who aren't here yet have to say, and it I think it does a disservice to our current members, it does a disservice to the Policy Committee. It does a, does a disservice to the process that we've adopted to do this review and in there will be absolutely the time and availability for any board member going forward to want to readdress or pull out specific policies. Um, so it doesn't, it doesn't logically make a lot of sense to me.
Chair Penner?
Um, yeah.
The policy review with OSBA is a contract and it, is it costing us money?
Yes.
So if it was supposed to end in August, do we have any late fees because we haven't completed it? Or if it extends into next year, does that become a new contract? And therefore a new cost that we would then have to pay to continue this work?
I don't know that there will be a new cost, but the Policy Committee meeting is, or the Policy Committee is meeting tomorrow and I can ask that question um and get that answer to you.
Thank you.
Well, Policy Committee meeting tomorrow makes sense only if uh it's going to be helpful for us to be doing the work, if if it's not seen as helpful, I think we don't really need to continue meeting twice more this month like we were planning. Uh, I understand your concern, actually, Brandy, and if I thought that we were entering on a slippy slippery slope when all of our business would be delayed because new members who aren't on the board yet asked for a delay, I think I would, I think I'd agree with that. They haven't done that yet and I doubt that they will, um, I don't know them, but I just don't think it's very likely. So I don't, I mean, as a general principle, it is not a good idea just to keep putting everything off because there's a new board coming, we should be working until our term is up. Um, it is not true, I think, that there is no controversy in the policies. Um, I marked some that I think are very likely to be controversial. Uh, I assume everybody got the color coded version, uh, there were, I I set that up in advance and was looking at them and I marked at least two, I think, policies that I thought were very likely to be controversial. Uh, and I also marked several in uh green that I thought probably wouldn't, but I could imagine maybe could, um, and probably, I would guess, one or two of those might end up. Then I marked several others that were blue that I thought made significant they were material changes, but I doubted that there was going to be any controversy and I would be surprised if there wasn't any of those. I did that uh because as part of uh trying to serve the needs of the people who aren't members of the Policy Committee that they could focus, Dave asked me to do that last meeting and I, so I said I would. Took me about ten hours or out of my Memorial Day weekend to do that. I would, so I would not want you to assume that there's nothing in there that's going to be controversial, in fact, I would guess that probably both of the ones I marked in red, we would be taking out and talking at things and probably wouldn't even act on until next time, next month anyway, under normal circumstances. So um so just, that just clarifies the record.
Ron, I really appreciate the extra time that you took to create that spreadsheet because it was really helpful, at least for me. Thank you.
Part of the learning curve that new members always have is you know, learning how much of what appears to be board work is actually staff work. And this is just going to be part of that process and, you know, um, they're going to have to, you know, just as we all have had to in our tenures, they're going to have to balance, you know, how much they want staff time spent on them and how much they want it spent on uh the 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 work that's getting done.
Brian's lost his audio, so we're trying to get that, it's, the wheels are coming off as we approach nine thirty. Brian's lost his audio, so we're trying to get that, it's, the wheels are coming off as we approach nine thirty. It's just technology says it's enough. So Brian, I don't know, I've been in meetings sometimes where this happens, and people mute and unmute.
Brandy?
Where are you?
This is Dave, I'm on my phone.
Good.
But I think that's why Brian is muted then, because
Yeah.
he used Brian's number, so the audio is Dave.
So what you can do is you go back to the calendar invite on your phone, well, that, you can go back to calendar invite probably and renew it for Brian. But Dave could have gotten in on, used the calendar invite on his phone, that's how I've done it, when I've had problems. Like the time I was chairing, and I had to keep coming back in, you know.
All right, so they both left, let's, let's give them a couple minutes here and hope that they can get back in for technical difficulties. Um, what else do we have to say? All right, Nikki, Brian. Brian, can you unmute, can we hear you?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I see Dave, Dave, can you unmute, can we hear you?
I am.
Oh.
There we go, okay. We're all back together, back in a quarrel.
Sorry.
Okay, to bring everybody up to speed, we have a motion, all right, yeah, we have a motion on the table to table the adoption of policy sections in the packet. There was a second, and there was a lot of discussion, are we ready for a vote on that motion?
Yeah, I guess I'll just say, you know, as an olive branch to the new members, and being, you know, it doesn't, it's not a good look to, right after an election, you, you try and pass a giant pile of policies before the new members are sworn in, it's just not a good look. Regardless of what your intention, I believe, I fully take your word for it, that you were just trying to do housekeeping or anything, but you have to think about how it will look to the community, and it's not a good look, and I think it hurts this board's legitimacy if we do something like that, regardless of what the intentions behind it are.
I appreciate you, if you really mean that, Brian, that you understand we were, you, when you brought that up, you, you threw shade on our integrity. And that if, if you can admit that that's not what you feel, I would be willing to, to accept your olive branch.
I, I, I fully accept that that was your guy's intention.
Okay, this is exciting, but we do have a motion on the table, so let's go ahead and vote, so the motion on the table is to table these until an undetermined later date, when the new board is here. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And opposed? Okay, it passes five, two, with Directors Penner and Penya. Voting no. Okay. Good work, board. All right, let's see, next up, next week is our last meeting before July and all our changes. So we will, of course, have our consent agenda, monthly financial report from Nikki, nutrition service and transportation department update from Shiloh, along with, we'll be setting the meal prices for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and our food commodity contracts. I'm, I will say this on a personal note, I'm a little bit bummed that we couldn't do the normal pizza tasting that we have been able to do in the past for our food services, but that's okay. Okay, and then we'll do our CMGC finding resolution, hopefully have a presentation from the city of Newburgh on their proposed urban renewal program. Approve our twenty-one, twenty-two board meeting calendar, potentially talk about the Oasis lease for the CV modulars, and then we will not have a set of policies to approve, so. All right, with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting's adjourned, everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.